Won't be long, get you and get you out tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to stand and we'll have the pledge and then ask the Reverend Owens if he'll come and have a call with us if he would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we honor God just by bowing our heads? Our Father and God, we thank you for this day we've never seen before. Thank you for our health and sense. We thank you for this wonderful board and all that it's done. Now we ask your guidance as we take care of kingdom business through this Hope County, County Commissioners. This is our prayer. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, thank Commissioner Hunt for that tonight for pledge and invocation. That might solve.
No, they've not.
Oh, we're good.
You're good.
Okay.
Are there any items needed to be tabled or pulled or need to add to the thing?
Mr. Chairman, we need to delete or take off item three A.
Three A?
Item three A.
Okay. We delete or take off item three A. Also with the item five, we also need to table that one that requested table.
I can do that.
Item five.
Are you going to table it to the next meeting, Mr. Chairman?
They will let us know.
Or they'll let you know?
They'll let us know.
Okay, all right.
As of now, we pull item five. We pulled five in over three weeks.
Three A.
Three A. If anyone else can pull the A.
They want to talk about, you know.
If not, do I hear most of your doubts?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Second, mostly second with doubt, all the time with sit on pretty with eyes. Pose, I have to thank you. Um, Mr. Turner, come here.
Yes, Stacy, is it Hannah?
Hannah.
Hannah.
AJNNAA.
Okay.
There we go.
Sorry. Good afternoon, sirs and madams. I'm a military spouse. I bought my house in Rayford in 2012 for the quiet. Now I cannot turn on my driveway without being knocked into four oh one because all of your traffic is doing the ride of young Hobson. It's no longer safe for me to leave my neighborhood. They were serving a wart in my neighborhood last week, four forty-five in the afternoon with a canine unit swept up in the raids from Moore County. Now my neighborhood has become devoid. So now I can't go outside my own house without a gun. I bought my house here for peace and quiet. That's why I have a pool in my backyard. I raise my children. I did my job. Why do I have to be afraid to go outside of my own neighborhood? And that's all I have to say. Very nice to meet all of you.
Thank you.
I came back on Friday thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, brought Brad Boe with me.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful night.
Nice to meet you.
Ms. Leandro?
I'm beginning to feel like I'm on the board. I'm back up for the animal shelter. I told you I'd be in that seat until it started and I'm a little disappointed nothing has happened. It's been going on nine months now and we need some help from you guys to get it going. You know, I know they're building the fire department, but I know J and K, they build everything at one time, you know, so. I think we need to get on it. It's going to get hot and those dogs are going to be hot and so then I'm going to have to go load them all up and bring them over to y'all's houses so they can get air conditioning. We need to do it. It's really, it's really, I've been really patient for ten years and for the last nine months, very patient. But we've got to help them out. Those girls out there have their hands full. I would love for you all to go out there and volunteer sometime and see what they do. It is, I would not do what they do for any amount of money whatsoever. You couldn't pay me enough to do their job. I think we need to work on that too. But we do need to get something going and it's going to take you guys getting involved a little more to get it going because every week, every month, we hear the same things, you know, and. It's time. I mean, I know how people get busy and put things off and I appreciate the, the building from him and I'm going to appreciate what you all put in. But we need to get going. I've heard nothing about any committees, anything like that, so. I think we need to kind of get it going before it gets hot because it's terrible to know these dogs are going to have to be outside some of, a lot of them in the heat. And it's, it's pitiful. It really is.
We help you push it.
You promise?
Promise.
Okay, because I'll be back next month.
Okay.
And I won't be as nice. My redhead, I'm now seventy-eight as of two weeks ago, so I'm seventy-eight now, so you all promised you'd do this before I got so old I'd have to be in a wheelchair to come up here.
Yes, sir.
Already got braces, so please, please get behind it and let's see if we can get something going, okay? I appreciate it because otherwise I'm going to be a mean redhead, okay?
And have you later birthday.
Thank you.
Nathaniel Van Say?
Van Sroy. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here in the interest, on behalf of the community, to address the water infrastructure that I still, through a month of research after last month's emergency, which I thank you all for fixing. And I thank you all for finding the cramped pipe that had caused water pressure issues in my own house for the last three or four years, at least since COVID. To give you a little input of that water pressure issue, as a veteran, I've been in Afghanistan and Iraq. And I had worse water pressure in my house for three years until the emergency last month than I had in Iraq and Afghanistan. That is shameful. I tried addressing it through your utilities department when it happened initially because I had my girlfriend living with me at the time. And I had to pay four hundred and fifty dollars out of my own pocket to have the water pressure and the chloramines tested twice by the dialysis company. It was trying to get her to do dialysis in my house while she was living with me. So your utilities department needs a little bit more training on public relations and kindness with public. And I would be interested in knowing what you guys plan on doing with increasing the water infrastructure. Because all I see so far is you're transporting water or importing water from Fayetteville to at least one community that's still being built. However, you're still working on the same lines that are fifty, sixty, seventy years old. And in some cases, your utilities department, there was multiple stories that came out at the time, they either didn't know the lines were there. Or they knew the lines were there, but they weren't told, they told the construction company that they were not working. And then when they kept digging, they broke the water line. And without any shut-off valves, as a gentleman, it was kind enough in the last meeting to address the issue. With no shut-off valves, when one line breaks, the whole area in the county loses water. So that can be addressed by putting in shut-off valves periodically throughout the system. Or you can put in pump stations, which can also address the water pressure issue and maintain an even pressure throughout the lines. They can also act as shut-off valves. But I see houses going up everywhere, which is going to continue adding to the water pressure issues. Furthermore, it's going to add to the public safety concerns with the fire departments not having enough water to suppress the fires. And I know this because in March, there was a grass fire in my neighborhood. It took five fire departments and the U.S. Forest Service to come out and address that issue and still, three houses were damaged from that. And those houses are all spaced pretty, pretty far apart, so it took that fire a while to burn across those yards and damage those houses. Now you're building houses that are so close together, they're like twenty feet apart in some places. A good example is right down Rockfish. If one of those houses catches fire.
A minute to rub, Mr. Nathan.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll be back next month.
Thank you. Ms. Christina?
Good evening, Commissioners, citizens behind me. I stand before you this evening to actually invite you to take part in what we believe is going to be a dynamic opportunity for constituents to talk to lawmakers and leaders. And to, for you to also hear what our concerns are. Today we are launching the press information on Hope County's Rural Accountability and Transparency Town Hall. This is actually a statewide campaign. It's going to be moving across the southeastern region. We are fortunate enough to be hosting the first event. This event is happening on Saturday, May seventeenth, four to six P.M. at the Rayford Civic Center. That's two hundred College Drive here in Rayford. There are lots of concerns, of course, as we are understanding around policy changes at all levels of government. And oftentimes constituents, particularly rural constituents, don't feel they're being heard or seen. And this campaign is really designed to provide an opportunity for rural constituents to be heard and seen. And for us to speak directly to our lawmakers in a manner with civility, which is one of my major concerns, so that you hear us and we are heard and seen. So again, I want you to mark your calendars. You're going to each receive an email from me, which will be a direct invitation to be a part of this event. Again, that's May seventeenth, four to six P.M. at the Hope Rayford Civic Center on College Drive. Thank you for this opportunity to share and I'm hoping that folk will listen, will read about it and they'll hope news journal, of course, as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Esslinger?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Esslinger. I'm a little bit nervous. It's my first time speaking. But I'm here, want to first of all, say thank you for putting the halt on any new constructions. I believe that article came out on April fourteenth as I had just finished finalizing a final paper on a Title One County, North Carolina's Leadership Summary. About my own county here in Hope County. I would love to share that with you all as well. But today here I am in opposition of the proposed seventy-six lot subdivisions on parcels four nine four eight four zero one zero one zero zero two and. Four nine four eight four zero zero one zero one zero zero three. Back in during COVID, the lots were clear cut and they were clear cut in a pretty aggressive fashion and there was no regenerative forestry practices considered. Now, years later, the land is being proposed for high-density development, which is once served as critical wetland and bird habitat. Not only is a portion of my own home and the back portion of my neighbor as well, we have wetland designated areas of our yards. And in these two proposed parcels for the seventy-six lot development, it majority of it is wetland. So as an environmental concern, that's just where I'm coming in as wetlands help manage flooding. They filter water, which is for groundwater, which we all know, you know, strangers to the water concern that we have here in Hope County. So I just ask you to please delay this action as well because it was approved prior to all of the things that were put on halt on April fourteenth. And I just want to say thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank each of you comments. We certainly heard them. We look at them and consider all of them, but thank you for taking the time to come and share them with us. Okay, three A has been taken off. Three B?
Mr. Chairman, this is application for a special use permit submitted by AGS Land LLC for the use of townhomes on a parcel on Skull Road. The property is, their applicant is requesting to build townhomes on a portion of the property. Single-family dwellings are on.
Ms. Jack?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mister Ben Stout is requesting a re, I am, excuse me, a special use for a, for townhomes to be located at property parcel four nine four five six zero two zero one zero zero two. He went before the planning board and it was rezoned December fourth of twenty twenty-three. It came before Commissioners on July the first of twenty twenty-four and it was tabled. And D O T has already signed off. I have a copy of the whole harmless agreement that he signed. The Farm Marshal has already approved it and Mister Stout is here for anyone who has any questions. Planning Board made a recommendation for approval and staff makes a recommendation for approval.
Staff can make your, make your case. Tell us all about it.
Well, I'm, I'm not great at politicking stuff, so I'll just kind of tell you what our thoughts are. This project, you know, lots taken place since we first came forward, but this is almost a year old and kind of sitting in. A situation where you couldn't go forward or backwards and so I think our mindset is, is, you know, we understand there's still probably a long road ahead of us regardless of what happens. The project, as it was originally presented, we're super comfortable with, but. My projections are down the line, affordability is still going to be a concern and for us, it's an opportunity to try to create a more affordable product. Again, we have been working on this long before the current issues that we're all facing. Again, we're, we're in it just like everybody else. But we'd like to see the project move forward. We like the opportunity to, when the timing's right and the situation presents itself, to be able to move forward. That we're in a position to do that because we've been in limbo for over a year and we just would like the opportunity to, when things get heading in the right direction, to be on the train and ride with everybody else as well, so. But again, happy to take questions. Anything I can do to answer them, I certainly will.
I have questions.
No ma'am.
Okay, I need to know his name.
Okay, he, he, that's right, no ma'am. When you say affordable home, what, what price range are you talking about?
Well, the cost of pipe infrastructure continues just to explode. And so it's really challenging. I mean, I think like two fifty used to be affordable, now it's three hundred and it just continues to go north. So I think the beta between a single-family home and a townhouse and having a buyer that would be attracted to that. My, this is just an opinion, but I think the spread is maybe like a seventy-five thousand dollar spread. So I think as the homes continue to get above three twenty-five, if you have a product that's in the two fifty range, I think that that gives folks a chance to where they can certainly choose to decide to still rent. But if they want to get and purchase, give them the opportunity to do that. And I think that that's the direction that. With the cost of, just the pure cost of putting infrastructure in place, that you're going to have to figure out a way to create a product that's under three hundred thousand. That's, that's the challenge moving forward to get people to purchase homes. Again, just my, my position.
Sounds good, okay.
Okay, thank you for your.
Public hearing. Anyone else have comments? For or against?
What was this?
Excuse me, Miss Winnie. Public comment for or against?
Miss, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mister Stout?
Yeah.
If you'd come back up, Ms. Jack, if you'll both come back up. Anybody, Mr. Chairman, that's going to speak will need to be sworn and I'll swear these two and.
They want to swear your statements.
Oh, don't need to, oh.
Just raise your right hand, both of you, if you will, please. Do you each swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth and that that you've already testified to before the board is the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And, and just for the record, my name's Ben Stout. My office address is two 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 Maiden Lane in Fayetteville. I've been here for, maybe not in Hope County, but been a part of Hope County and Cumberland County for the last twenty years. I'm a local person. I do it for myself. I have a home building company and so that's who I am. Thank you.
Any more public comments? It's an open public hearing against or for. Any more comments? You got a, got a question? Come up front. Hey, come up front, give us your name and just want to take a oath. Well, I swear.
You'll raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth and this is a solemn affirmation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question. Does every developer get sworn in like that?
Special use permits.
Just special use permits? Okay, because then he would have, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, no public comments. This is the time to talk about it. If not.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
A second?
Second.
Longer than would I?
All right.
Pose? All right, what wish of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Mister Stout, you, you, it says townhomes and I might have missed this or not, I'm not sure, but how many townhomes are you talking about?
Yes, sir. Right now, the property, they're, well, direct answer is forty-five. Right now, it's currently, as it sits, it's set up for sixteen single-family houses. But with, if, if it was approved, it'd been increased from sixteen, that's already been approved, to forty-five for that particular section. Is that?
Okay, was it an additional forty-five or a total of forty-five?
A total of forty-five. And, you know, that, that's the way it's laid out. If you, again, I, I don't know how it all works, but if you wanted to have like a not to exceed and have that a condition of it, if that was something that would please the public and the board, I'd be happy to include that. To where there wouldn't be any more than, if that was something that would help. Again, I, we're, we're pretty transparent in what we do, but I understand you can't take my word for it, so if that would be of an issue, happy to try to accommodate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to hear from the attorney to see what the, what our obligations are, our legal rights are. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Concerning.
The, uh, the conditional use.
The special use permit?
Yes.
So. With the special use permit. There are certain things and it should be enumerated in the Planning Board's approval. That there's certain conditions already in that and if the board would want to add anymore, the board can do that.
Mr. Chairman, I want to address the young lady in the back with the lavender shirt. Give her her name again, please, ma'am.
Lauren Esslinger.
Okay, I can't, I don't think I remember the last name.
Your name is Lauren.
We, we, what we did was recently, like you mentioned, we, we decided to stop the, the building or of new homes and, and infrastructures as of a certain date. When we, when we did that, I think the day, if I'm not mistaken, Madam Clerk or County Manager, was it, what was the date to start that, as of the day of that meeting?
It was last week's meeting?
Yes.
Um, two.
April twenty-eighth.
Two twenty-eight.
So that, four twenty-eight, right?
Four, I'm sorry, four twenty-eight, sir.
So, so we, when we voted to stop the building, it was as of that date. So any application we received prior to that day could be subject to approval. Like this right here actually meant the deadline that we actually put in place. In the, in the, the whole harmless agreement we have, we're letting them know that there's no guarantee that you're going to be giving water at this particular time. Because we have, we have up until a year or two, I'm assuming, to continue with our infrastructure. And that's, that's what we're working on now with the state of North Carolina and also with our utility department, putting together more water infrastructure. So. This conditional use that came before us meant the requirements, anything going forward after April twenty-eighth, we're not really coming forward as board. Because we're not going to approve anything until we get the infrastructure in place. However, we could approve this and I'm inclined to, to approve it because it's a conditional use, number one. Number two, we could put a stipulation on this condition that two things happen. One, you don't build no more than forty-five units. And then number two, water will not be given to you until water is available. So, so I'm inclined, board, to, to look at it that way, but I would like to hear from the board to see what they think.
I want to clarify, she, she mentioned a specific development during her public comments that, that we are not seeing tonight. So we, we are not hearing that, that case tonight. And so, so there was a development that was going to the planning board. I think there were some issues regarding advertising and, and that, that has been rescheduled. And so I think she talked about the high-density zoning case that they may be making its way to us. We, she mentioned a parcel number and I didn't see it here, so based on her comments.
Oh, I know this parcel here.
Yeah, yeah, she, she was not here, so, so that, that matter will be coming and I would ask her to, if, if she lives within the five hundred foot radius of that, that parcel. She will get notified by mail. If she doesn't, I would ask that she go to our website and check our agenda so that she can come back and speak when that, when that matter comes before this board.
What is the wish of the board on item three?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I make a motion that we approve this matter. Of course, we are having water issues. This does not mean that we're approving it from water allocation. We have seen this before. We tabled it to get more information. He's done his due diligence. He's went through every, every agency that he needed to go to and to do his due diligence. And I see no reason as of this point to not approve the special use permit. And like I said, the water allocation to be something that goes, that happens later. He seems to be aware, I'm sorry, the, the public hearing is closed. He seems to be aware that, that this is not going to be a short-term thing as we continue to boost our infrastructure. But with that up being said, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion and second to approve?
I'll make a second to approve it. Also, I. Also, I just wanted the public to know, they don't know Ben Stout. He's a good person to get to know. He's been in this community for twenty years. There are a lot of builders that come here and developers that come to Hope County that come and go, and they come here to make a profit, and they take off. Ben Stout grew up in this Hope County community, been a sounding developer here, does party homes, and he does his best to try to bring affordable homes. So I think I can stand on him doing what he says he's going to do. Can I second that motion?
The motion is second to approve this one, based on what the planning board has approved and sent to us to approve. We have had the public hearing, heard from the public, had a motion and a second. All have considered. All in favor of what I?
All right.
Post? I approve. Okay. Consent, we got A, B, C, D, E, F. And the board have any issue with any of them? If not, all motion approved. That motion to approve, consent?
I make a motion to approve our items four A through F.
That's second?
Second.
The motion is second to approve A, B, C, D, E, F. All had time to consider, all in favor of what I?
All right.
Post? I have, thank you. Number five has been tabled. Number six, management board.
Good evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. I have one thing that I need to do that finance has asked me to do. I need to have POs cut off for our budget year of twenty twenty-five. We would like to do it Wednesday, but I know how the board is. We need to cut off all POs.
All POs, okay.
Effective Wednesday. If the board wants me to hold it until Friday at five P.M., that would be all POs cut off except emergency POs. Anything emergency, I'll approve up to fifteen thousand dollars for emergency. Anything other than that would have to come to the board at their next meeting to be approved.
What should the board?
Mr. Chairman, I don't see no reason to wait till Wednesday. I mean, they've, this budget year is almost over. I'd entertain a motion, I'll make a motion that we do it as of today.
Okay, you heard the motion, a second. You say a lot of minutes like that.
County manager, you okay, Ben?
I am.
A second.
Motion is second, all have time to consider, all in favor of what I?
All right.
Post, I have, it's inflation right now. Jim, your money's gone.
The next thing I would like to do is, we have hired two new employees that I would like to introduce. We have hired a new H.R. Director, Gabriel McNilly. That's our new H.R. Director.
Come on, we're going to see you. We know you, because we know you when we see you. You have any jobs open?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. So I am the new H.R. Director, and I want to say that this has definitely been a great opportunity. I want to thank you all for the opportunity, and I'm glad to be a part of a great team.
Good, thank you.
And we have also hired a new Assistant County Attorney.
All right.
Ms. Chavis.
Ms. Chavis.
Ms. Megan Chavis is our new Assistant County Attorney. She is on board also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to be here. I'm excited for what I can offer for the County of Hope, and I'm excited to be here tonight.
A lot of legal stuff going on, DJ.
I see.
Thank you. Thank you for joining the team from both of you. So they've been working out great.
Thank you.
That's for next meeting.
Next, okay.
That's it. That is it. That is all I have for tonight.
County manager, I have on my schedule blocked off next week, thirteenth and fourteenth, for county, county meetings.
Next month?
I think I have...
That's supposed to be June.
That's not for next week.
I thought you did say next week.
Thirteenth and fourteenth of next week, I have marked off for county government meetings. What did we mark off for?
That, that's what I had, but that...
Was that, was that, is that the retreat?
No, y'all have the retreat for the twenty-ninth and thirtieth.
I have thirteenth and fourteen on my schedule. I guess last week, we scheduled something for the thirteenth and fourteenth. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page.
That's when I stepped out, y'all did that. You still do. I think I stepped out.
We got budget stuff on the tenth and eleventh of June.
Yeah, that's the tenth and eleventh of June. So what y'all scheduled? Y'all tried that, and then we scheduled it for the twenty-ninth and thirtieth.
Yeah.
I want to say it's the retreat. I think it is the retreat.
The twenty-ninth and thirtieth.
Twenty-ninth and thirtieth of what month?
Of May.
This month.
It is.
Yes, sir. Next week.
Okay, so nothing on thirteen and fourteen.
Yes, sir, not on my knowledge.
All right.
You need to find a guy somebody with a cheap phone.
Come on, now.
Well, I had that date, too.
Yeah, three, three of us had to beat my calendar, but if it's not needed, it's not needed, so. It can be erased from the calendar.
But it's okay. Look at that.
Uh, Tish?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we need to, from our office staff, let's do a letter and ask DOT about cutting the grass in Hope County side of the road.
Yes, sir.
Sometime they do it, and sometime we have to remind them to do it. I know local DOT contracted that out.
Okay.
With someone, I don't know who that is. But what about let this office send a letter, also send it to our representative, Peter's office?
Okay.
And to our representatives, Brett and all of them?
Okay.
Ask them to, ask to get another cut. We need a bad cut. And pick up, and help pick up trash.
Okay, will do.
Get that out of our office to DOTs right away, because the hallways coming up. We certainly need our road cleaned and cut, and ask them to help get out, pick up some trash and cut our roads.
Okay, will do.
Get it out for them, okay? If they helps tonight? Not, Tony, I take a motion from you, sir.
I'll sure give you one. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with a June.
That's second?
Second.
All in favor of what I? We need to adjourn. Thank you all for coming.
Hey, Tish, can somebody send us an email with the, whatever, all the planned dates coming up?
Yeah, I'll see that back, too. I, I am, I'm not wrong. Y'all did say the twenty-ninth and thirtieth.
I have been on my schedule, too. Yeah, I've been on my schedule.
That was a, that was a bite of y'all's design.